Please call the order. Call for, I'd like to welcome everybody to our reorganization meeting, uh, chaired by, uh, Patrick Thomas. And with the pledge of ages, all rise.
Mr. Craig. When we come here tonight, facing the new year. Being humans, sometimes we face a year with worries, concerns, doubts about the future. We pray that our doubts and our fears be replaced by hope and anticipation of opportunities. We ask for spirit, integrity, truth, justice, compassion, fairness. We ask this on everyone gathered here, and we ask that you unite us, we move forward as a community into the future. Amen.
Congratulations to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. I'd like to, um, out of the office for newly elected officials, by the honorable Lieutenant Horace Davis from the Delaware County District Court, thirty-one, one-twenty. That's one for Sprague.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening.
Good evening.
Happy New Year to each and every one of you in the families and the homes that you represent. It is my pleasure, as an elected official magistrate of District Judge Wilden Horace Davis of the city of Chester, that I'm able to perform these duties for you this evening. If you would be so kind, this is a memorial, a very memorial moment, if you would be so kind as to please put your cell phones at least on vibrate or silent, it's fine to leave them on, if you want to take photos, I'm sure everyone here is welcome. Chris, would you place one hand on the book, and hold the other, raise the other, and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Say your name.
Chris Sprague.
Do solemnly.
Do solemnly.
Affirm.
Affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the Commonwealth.
Of the Commonwealth.
That I will discharge the duties.
That I will discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Integrity.
Integrity.
And honesty.
And honesty.
Sir, congratulations.
Thanks.
Robert Yunusy, fresh.
Place one hand on the Bible and raise the other, and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name for the record.
Rob Yunusy.
Do solemnly.
Do solemnly.
Affirm.
Affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the Commonwealth.
Of the Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge my duties.
And that I will discharge my duties.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Honesty.
Honesty.
And integrity.
And integrity.
Congratulations. Just one hand, and raise the other. Repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name for the record.
Lieutenant Wilson.
Do solemnly.
Do solemnly.
Affirm.
Affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Con- and the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the Commonwealth.
Of the Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge my duties.
And that I will discharge my duties.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Integrity.
Integrity.
And honesty.
And honesty.
Sir, congratulations. You're welcome, sir, thank you.
Congratulations.
Roll call, Mr. Vicente.
Mayor Reeves.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Ms. Reeves.
Here.
Ms. Sigga.
Here.
Ms. Sprague.
Here.
Ms. Stewart.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Yanty.
Yunusy.
Yunusy.
I follow you. The nomination for our council president, Rob Yunusy, the president of council. Motion, do we have a second?
Drag it.
Anybody else? All in favor of Rob Yunusy?
I make a motion to nominate Phil Stewart for council president.
You have a second for that?
I second.
You have a motion, second for, uh, for, uh, Rob Yunusy, and the other for Rob, um, Phil Stewart. Roll call vote, please.
So which one do we vote on?
So wait, just, just, you know, just a quick FYI for yous. So for nominations for council president, you only need a nomination. One person, you just have to nominate, you don't have to second a nomination for council president. And then you have to go into, once you have your nominations, then you go into your elections, which would require a motion, and a second, and a vote. So it sounds like you have two nominations, and so you would vote on the first nomination, and then vote on the second nomination.
So the first one would be Robert Yunusy, right?
Correct.
All in favor of Rob Yunusy?
Aye.
No.
No.
Do we have a roll call, Bill?
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Ms. Reeves.
Aye.
Mr. Sigga.
Aye.
Mr. Sprague.
No.
Mr. Stewart.
No.
Mr. Wilson.
No.
Mr. Yunusy.
No.
The motion fails four to three for Mr. Yunusy to be council president.
All in favor for, um, uh, Mr. Stewart as council president?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Roll call vote.
Ms. Gross.
No, absolutely not.
Ms. Reeves.
No.
Ms. Sigga.
No.
Mr. Sprague.
Aye.
Mr. Stewart.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Yunusy.
Aye.
Motion carries four to three.
Nomination for council vice president?
Nominate Rob Yunusy for vice president.
Yes, the first one be?
Yunusy. All in favor of Rob Yunusy as, uh, council vice president?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call vote.
Ms. Gross.
No.
Ms. Reeves.
No.
Ms. Sigga.
No.
Mr. Sprague.
Aye.
Mr. Stewart.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Yunusy.
Aye.
Motion for Mr. Yunusy as vice president would be approved.
You have an appointment for nomination for council pro temp?
I nominate Chris Sprague for pro temp.
You're actually, you're, your virtual point of, you're in appointments now, you're nominated.
Okay.
Fidelity, integrity, and honesty. Fidelity, integrity, and honesty. What you got? Yep, you're right, you're absolutely right. Fidelity, integrity, and honesty.
Clark, do we have the appointment on the pro temp yet? No, yeah. That's where we're at now.
Beth first.
Beth first.
So you're gonna make a motion?
Make a motion, make a motion to make Beth first.
I make a motion to make, uh, Chris Sprague the pro temp.
Roll call vote, Jim.
So you, so now you're at the point of appointment, so you need, so we need a second on Beth Gross, and then we're gonna need a second. And then you need a second, if you have another motion, you need a second on? I'll second Chris Sprague. So now you have two motions. Okay, I have a motion to appoint Beth Gross as the pro temp. Uh, Mr. Vicente, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Gross. Ms. Reeves.
Yes.
Mr. Sigga.
Yes.
Mr. Sprague.
No.
Mr. Stewart.
No.
Mr. Wilson.
No.
Mr. Yunusy.
No.
Motion for?
Motion's gonna fail four to three. I also have a motion on the table to appoint Chris Sprague as the council pro temp. Mr. Yun- Vicente, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Gross.
Sure. No, that don't matter, he don't matter. Sure.
Ms. Reeves.
No.
Mr. Sigga.
No.
Mr. Sprague.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Yunusy.
Yes.
Motion passes, that's five to two. Congratulations, Mr. Sprague. At this time, council, uh, we will take, uh, motions for professional services. Can I have a motion for the appointment of the borough solicitor, please?
I make a motion to appoint the firm of Pressman and Doyle as our borough solicitor.
So I have any other nominations for the solicitor?
Vacancy board chair?
Yeah. We're wondering about the vacancy. Oh, you want to do the vacancy board chair?
I need to check on the vacancy board chair, because I don't know when, that's term.
They expire every two years.
Oh, okay.
Every reorganization meeting. You have a motion and a second on it, or you might as well?
Might as well take for the borough solicitor. I'd like to nominate Rudolph Clark, LLC, as our firm.
I have a question, I have a question here, please.
Sure, Mr. Mayor.
Where is our, uh, solicitor at tonight?
About to be appointed, hopefully.
Not to be appointed?
Hopefully, the solicitor will be appointed here in about thirty seconds, Mr. Mayor.
I mean, uh, the one that you always have.
Well, that's a good question, we don't have the answer to that.
Yes, we do, because Mr. Stewart called and told them they didn't want to be in their services. On Friday, on Friday.
Can I have a second on the, uh?
Is that true?
I have a motion made and seconded.
That is true, that is true. He told her not to come.
Why did you make this choice?
I have a, I have a motion, I have a motion made and seconded for, uh, Rudolph Clark.
There's seven people up here, not four, or three, or two.
Mr. Vicente, do you want to take a roll call vote on the first appointment, which would be the firm of Pressman and Doyle?
Never does. Nope.
Ms. Gross.
Yes. Fidelity, integrity, honesty. Uh, Pressman and Doyle, yes.
Mr. Sigga.
Yes.
Mr. Sprague.
No.
Mr. Stewart.
No.
Mr. Wilson.
No.
Mr. Yunusy.
No.
Motion fails.
That's sad.
Three to four. At this time, I got a motion on table for the appointment of Rudolph Clark as the borough solicitor. Mr. Vicente, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Behind everybody's back.
I know.
Right. That's a disgrace.
Gross.
That's illegal, against the law.
Don't know anything about him. Is Rudolph Clark even in the room?
Roll call, please.
Is there Rudolph Clark in the room?
Uh, yes, I'm Rudolph.
Okay, so you already knew ahead of time that you were gonna be appointed?
We all see what happens with the vote.
You know that this was all done behind everybody's back, correct?
That's amazing.
Ms. Gross.
No.
Ms. Reeves.
It's like all things behind people's back, that's illegal.
It is an illegal avenue. You did the same thing.
They're ready for whoever, whoever it is.
He forgot.
Yes, there is, there is.
I said, you forgot.
I forgot.
That's the way it was done when you guys were there.
Mr. Sigga.
Believe me, I was there.
What was done?
Mr. Sprague.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Yeah, watch what you say. Yes. It's on record.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Yunusy.
Yes.
The appointment of Rudolph Clark passes, what was it, five, five, two?
Five, three? No.
Four, three.
No, I said no.
Oh, you're, yeah.
I said Pressman and Doyle.
She didn't say Pressman and Doyle.
I was the one that made the nominee.
Four, three, sorry.
Sorry.
Council, I introduce to you Peter Amuso.
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 Partner with Rudolph Clark, have a lot of experience in municipal law, and I look forward to working with everybody here, thank you.
Council, at this time, I entertain a motion for the labor relations solicitor.
Make a motion to nominate McNichol, Byrne, and Matelowski.
That's right.
Labor relations solicitor.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Reeves, and a second by Councilman Sigga. Are there any other nominations? The nomination was for?
Labor relation.
Byrne, McNichol, and Matelowski. I'll second that. I already have a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Council, at this time, I entertain a motion for the solicitor for the planning commission.
Make a motion to nominate, uh, Pressman and Doyle.
Second.
I have a motion made and seconded for Pressman Doyle, are there any other nominations at this time? Not hearing any, all in favor, please say aye. 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 Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Council, at this time, I entertain a motion to appoint a solicitor for the zoning hearing board.
John F. Riley.
I have a motion for John F. X. Riley to have a second.
Second.
Motion from Ms. Gross, second from Ms. Reeves, is there any other nominations? Not hearing any other nominations, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. At this time, I entertain a motion to appoint a solicitor for the civil service commission. May I have a motion? I make a motion that we, uh, appoint John F. X. Riley.
I second.
I have a motion, I'll recognize from Mr. Wilson to appoint John F. X. Riley, and a second from Mr. Yunusy. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Council, at this time, I entertain a motion to appoint the borough engineer.
Make a motion to appoint Lisa Catania, Catania Engineering as our borough engineer.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded, do I have any other nominations? Not hearing any, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I entertain a motion to appoint the building code official.
Make a motion to appoint John Lyman and Evan Hotchwatch for plumbing.
Mike Vicente for?
Help, yeah, Mike Vicente for office.
Second.
What's the motion we're asking for, building? We're building code official. So we have a motion, and I'm assuming it'll be for John Lyman?
Yep.
So who's, who's making the motion for Evan?
Me.
Everybody for John, stands for John.
John and Evan, and Mike as health inspector.
Then who's got the second, Ms. Gross? Do I have any other nominations? I'd like to nominate Barry Isit and Associates for building code official. To have a second on Barry Isit.
I'll second that.
Mr. Vicente, can I have a roll call vote on the first nomination, which would be for John Lyman as the BCO, uh, with, uh, Mike Vicente as the health inspector, and Evan Hotchback for plumbing?
Ms. Gross.
For John, Evan, yes. Mike.
Ms. Reeves.
Uh, John Lyman for building code official, Evan Hotchback for plumbing, and Mike Vicente for health inspector.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Mr. Sigga.
Yes, John, yes, John Lyman for building, Evan Hotchwatch for plumbing, and Mike Vicente for health.
Yes. Mr. Sprague.
No.
Mr. Stewart.
No.
Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Stewart, don't you have to abstain on that?
Wait a minute.
Is there a litigation against you?
I've got citations against you, I don't know how you can vote, Mr. Stewart.
I don't know how you can vote when you have all these violations of your property in a borough money stone, so. You've got one, two, three, four. That's corruption right there, you can't, you can't vote. Somebody out that got citations against you, you're not going to hurt. You can't do these kind of things.
Retaliation. Yep, that's what that is. If you remember, he abstained on the votes before because he was a business owner. Because, yes, he had a personal issue with Mr.?
We have an attorney. So there, there's no requirement to abstain unless you're gonna financially benefit from?
Yes, he's got a violation of benefit.
He's got a financial benefit, but.
It has to do more with contracts going to Mr. Stewart's business or some member of his family, so there's no legal reason for Mr. Stewart to abstain.
The citations are against Mr. Stewart's business.
I, I understand that, but this is not gonna financially impact him if this goes.
Sure, it does, he owns a business financially. Oh, wow.
It's unsafe. Rob and Chris do not follow behind him.
They're already dead.
They're already dead, Kelly.
It's over.
They're already dead. They're already dead, let him be the last.
Mr. Wilson, your vote for?
Dune.
I vote aye for Barry Isit.
Retaliation.
Aye for Barry Isit.
So the first motion's a fail. Alright, so four to three on the first motion, on the second motion. I have a motion on the floor, which has been seconded to appoint Barry Isit and Associate as the building code official.
Do we have any, um, uh, do we have a fee schedule or anything for these people that we can see before we?
They have any, uh?
Yeah, any cred?
Resumes?
Yeah, resumes.
I have a representative from Barry Isit that would be more than happy to come up and explain their qualifications in front of our council.
Have you had a written firm from Barry Isit? Has your, has your BCO worked for?
Good evening, my name is Matt LaPluski, I'm the building code official for Barry Isit and Associates, and also the mainline operations manager.
Where are you from, sir, I'm sorry?
Barry Isit and Associates.
Where are you located?
I am located in our mainline office, currently operating out, Phoenixville.
So that's Chester County?
Phoenixville Section, Montgomery County.
Okay. Montgomery County, so, are you familiar with, like, uh, Delaware County codes?
Oh, most definitely.
BCO codes?
Uh, I am in, as a building code official, I was certified under the UCC. I am currently in Radnor Township, as well as, as well as five other municipalities as a manager. We have thirty-nine building code officials. We have seven master code professionals. We have five floodplain managers. We are a multi-disciplined engineering firm that does everything from municipal engineering, civil engineering, only thing we actually don't touch are bridges, with our engineering firm. But that's who we are, we will be here and present with our, with our nice Toyota Priuses with the big label on the side. And we'll be here for all your needs, whatever you guys need. We answer phone calls, we answer emails, and if there are issues, everybody will be aware through our, through our recording process.
Okay, how did you hear about the building code? Did Mr. Stewart reach out to you?
No, Mr. Stewart did not reach out to us. The, uh, my boss, the director of code services for Barry Isit, Matt Walter, received a phone call and? From?
From me.
Mr. Glenn Wilson. And I?
Go to Tam Cryer, okay.
And, and I followed, I followed along. So, not that, we're out there looking for things to do, like additional contracts, additional municipalities to serve. We hold no bars, we, one of the biggest things for me going to this company, coming from municipal life, is we do not pay to play at all. That's one of the biggest no-no's. I lost five contracts this year because we don't pay to play. And we will help out, we help out largely with municipal run things, uh, like Hunchak Food Bank, I personally run, or take that up. We, we're huge with philanthropy within municipalities that we serve.
Well, we were already told that, um, one of our council members up here was already running his mouth saying that come January, that you won't need permits, that you won't need COs.
So?
We're already having issues, so how are these issues gonna be dealt with?
So, we will work with the municipal staff, manager, mayor, and address those issues that are present. We will address any concerns that come before us. We file the Pennsylvania Uniform Construction Code to a T. As a third party, it's black and white, there's no I say so code, there's no, hey, you need a permit to paint your house, like, that's I say so code. We have to file the state law to a T. And one of the biggest things for me coming to this company, a year ago, we're all from the field, so we understand the processes. We understand how to work with the community, and we underst- because we were the contractors on the other side at some point in our lives. So, we are very open, I, this evening I will give you my card, you can call me tomorrow, and I'll be here. With that said, in my mainline office, I have seven people underneath me, so if we need somebody to look at a rental property, we need somebody to shoot down, look at a property maintenance complaint, it'll happen, right then and there, and we will be available twenty-four, seven.
Do you know anything at all about any stuff?
Any stuff? I don't, I actually do not know much, and I apologize for that. I'm a Montgomery County kid. I'm a Montgomery County kid. I do have, I do have an inspector that lives in Aspen, and there's a lot more about you guys. I come from the fire side of the world. I was a career firefighter in Lower Mary Township. I know you guys have yellow fire trucks. You guys used to have a hovercraft with a big, big fan on it that we used for a warehouse fire, to blow it out. So, I, I mean, I, I know bits and pieces, a- a- as a third party consultant coming in, we, we will, we dive in, completely dive in, and we're, we're here to help you guys. Alright, thank you guys very much.
Are you going to have somebody here, like, twenty hours a week or something, or?
Excuse me?
Are you going to have somebody here a certain amount of hours a week?
We can have somebody here...
Do you want to know how much you're getting paid? Like, what the pay's going to be, how the pay scale is, uh...
That has not been finalized. Because it, and the reason we did not finalize it was because we're waiting for a vote to make. So what has been discussed is twenty hours a week. So, so somebody here...
So complaining about having to work for personal...
So you accepted a job without knowing what you're getting paid?
What's that?
You accepted a job without getting to know what you get paid?
We need to work with the current fee schedule that is available, a- and see what, what will work for you guys and work for us at the same time.
So you're not just taking the fee payment that was already installed, you're going to negotiate?
Only thing that was available to me was what was online from two thousand fifteen, I believe, of a, of a residential fee schedule that only had a residential fee. For twenty-five dollars per each thousand...
No, I mean your fee, that's a good change, or should be one, it's...
Exactly, and, and that's only stuff that we do.
No, I mean the fee that you're getting paid.
What's that?
The fee that you're getting paid.
The fee that we're getting paid. As of, right now, what has been discussed i- is up to the chair.
So you're going to accept to be paid whatever they decide?
Yes, mu- mu- one hundred percent.
So they try to give you a dollar out of twenty-five bucks, you're going to accept that, right?
That's going to be kind of hard, because the Prius takes a lot more gas in it. It's only seven gallons, but it takes a lot more.
So then you have, so you have a number, then, in your head, that you only do this for?
Mr. Bold, Ms. Hall, just as, you know, as a point, as a point of, as a point of clarity...
How many times do you have to go to hire somebody if you don't know what they're going to be paid?
As a, as a point of clarity, all professional appointments serve at the pleasure of Borough Council. There's going to be some negotiations that need to go on to establish, you know, some hourly rates and where the fee schedules are. And we will work with, with all of our professional appointments this evening to make sure that those fee schedules will fit within our budgetary constraints.
But you were handed John only worked a few hours a week. I thought you said you were going to get somebody forty hours.
We needed someone full-time in there, remember?
Where, where are we at with the motion? I have a motion and second on the table. I have a motion and second on the table to appoint Barry Isit as the BCO for the Borough of Eddie Stone.
There's a retaliation that you guys follow.
May I have a roll call vote, please? Ms. Gross?
There's your number one customer right there.
Three properties, you have to see each back in the permit board.
Ms. Reeves?
No.
Mr. Signa?
No.
Mr. Sprague?
Aye.
Mr. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Yunuzi?
Aye.
Motion passes.
No, he actually works for a getting firm apparently, I just, literally just found out.
Okay, thank you, sir, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, I'll hand it over. I'll hand it over.
Hiring family, hiring friends.
Yes. No, uh, he's a steward for Evan. Just to, just to clarify the comment that was just made, is that I do work for an engineering firm, the engineering firm that I work for is actually a competitor of Barry Isit.
Yeah, but you have a BCO, it doesn't mean that you can't get, you know...
Well, I'll tell you, if someone wants someone to blame for this, I...
We're not looking to spread blame, we're looking to move on.
Yeah, somebody is looking to spread blame.
At this time, council ought to entertain a motion to appoint the IT support person.
Stevie G and Frank Cristo.
I have a motion for Stevie G, I have a second for Stevie G, I'll recognize Councilwoman Reeves as making the motion. Councilwoman Signa to second it, all in favor for Stevie G to serve in the capacity of the ICT support person, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Council at this time ought to entertain a motion to appoint the auditor, or the financial director. I'm sorry, council at this time ought to entertain a motion to appoint the financial director.
Make a motion to appoint Pasenti LLC.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Reeves and a second by Councilwoman Gross to appoint Joseph Pacente and Associates LLC as the financial director for the borough. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Council at this time ought to take a motion to appoint the auditor.
John Hahnin.
I make a motion to make auditor John Hahnin, and Mingus and Ketsch...
Gotowski.
Ketsch, I'm close.
Just to clarify, I'll make a motion that Mingus Gotowski Company LLC be our auditor.
I have a motion from Mr. Wilson, which I'll recognize. I'll second it from Mr. Signa for the appointment of Mingus and Gotowski as the auditor for the Borough of Eddie Stone. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Council at this time ought to entertain a motion to appoint the actuary for the police pension plan.
Make a motion to appoint Thomas J. Anderson, the actuary for the pension plan.
I second that.
Council, I have a motion on the table from Councilwoman Reeves for the appointment of Thomas J. Anderson and Associates, seconded by Mr. Wilson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Council at this time ought to entertain a motion to appoint a borough manager.
Make a motion to appoint Joseph, Joseph Pacente LLC as manager, second.
I have a motion to appoint Joseph Pacente LLC as a manager from Ms. Reeves, a second from Ms. Gross. Is there any other motions for a borough manager?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Don Jones as manager, Eddie Stone Borough.
Do we have any credentials for Don Jones?
I have a resume.
I have a motion on the table for Don Jones, but I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion made and seconded for Don Jones, will take action on the first nomination, which would be Mr. Pacente as the borough manager. Roll call, please. Ms. Gross?
Mr. Pacente, aye.
Ms. Reeves?
Uh, Mr. Pacente.
Mr. Signa?
Mr. Pacente.
Mr. Sprague?
No.
Mr. Stewart?
No.
Mr. Wilson?
No.
Mr. Yunuzi?
No.
Motion fails. Three noes, or four noes to three ayes. Second motion on the table is to appoint Don Jones as the borough manager. May I have a roll call vote, please? Ms. Gross?
No.
Ms. Reeves?
No.
Mr. Signa?
No.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Can we have that motion write the first?
Sure. If you would like to, I know that the solicitor had some concerns with making the appointment this evening without having an employment agreement, so...
Well, just to speak generally, I believe the council has its regular meeting next Monday.
Correct.
So we can work out any employment agreement with Ms. Jones by next Monday.
Yeah, we'd like to see a resume or something, I mean, nothing against Don Jones, I know John, nothing against Don, I would just like to see a resume.
And certainly the employment agreement as well, that the council can vote on next Monday. So the appointment of Don Jones can be subject to the drafting of the agreement by the solicitor and approval by council at its regular January meeting.
Yeah, we know what the charges for Pasenti were, we don't know what the borough manager will be getting paid, or, you know...
Mr. Wilson, can you please revise your motion to incorporate the comments of our solicitor?
Yeah.
Which would be to include the contingency on, on executing an employment agreement.
Alright, the motion is to appoint Don Jones as manager for the Borough of Eddie Stone contingent upon the execution of a mutually agreeable employment offer, prepared by our solicitor and approved by council, which outlines duties, responsibilities, and performance expectations, along with salary and benefit, compensation, understanding that Pacente Consulting will continue in said role until the employment agreement is executed, which would be by a vote of council.
Mr. Solicitor, is that acceptable to you?
That's correct, yes, and the idea is to have an agreement ready for council to vote on by next month.
So that'll be discussed in the executive session, correct?
Uh, correct, correct, absolutely, you'll vote on it in public.
In an executive session, that, nothing leaves executive session, correct?
Uh, typically, no, nothing leaves executive session.
Exactly, thank you.
So I have a motion on the table from Ms. Dawn, can I have a second on the revised motion that Mr. Wilson made, which includes the employment agreement?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, roll call vote, please, Mr. Pacente. Ms. Gross? You're voting for Don, Ms. Gross.
It's your decision.
Well, for the, for the employment agreement as well, employment agreement, yeah.
Right, subject to an employment agreement.
Subject to employment agreement.
Seven and a half.
Ms. Gross, I need a yes or no on the appointment of Don Jones. Ms. Reeves?
I'm abstaining because I want more information.
Is that a cause for abstaining?
It, it's not, Ms. Reeves, really abstaining is only if you're going to be, if you're going to get some kind of financial benefit, so you can't abstain from lack of information. You can vote yes or no. And, and again, with the understanding that the employment agreement will come before council next week in executive session, you can discuss it then and then vote on it in public.
Then with that being said, my answer would be no.
Mr. Signa?
No.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Yunuzi?
Yes.
Motion carries four to three. Did the judge skip out?
Yep.
We do have Ms. Jones here, mayor, if you'd like to swear her in as borough manager?
No, no, I think, if I may, yeah, we, we, well, it's subject to the agreement, so certainly you've made the vote. I will now work with Ms. Jones, where is Ms. Jones?
Let's try, Bill.
Where's Ms. Jones?
Is there a Ms. Jones out there?
Hey, Dawn.
Hi.
Dawn, don't offend.
This is, we, we can talk afterwards and work out an agreement in the next month, uh, week, and then we'll go on to council, and maybe we can reach with the judge to be present.
No problem. Council, take a motion for the appointment of the borough secretary.
Make a motion to appoint Tina Torres as borough secretary, second.
I have a motion to appoint Tina Torres as borough secretary, any other nominations?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Don Jones as secretary for the Borough of Eddie Stone, understanding that Tina Torres will continue in said role until the employment agreement is executed by council.
Do I have a second on that?
A second.
I have a second on that as well, so first, action would be for Tina Torres for the borough secretary. Ms. Gross?
Yes, for Tina.
Ms. Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Signa?
Yes.
Mr. Sprague?
No.
Mr. Stewart?
People that grew up here.
No.
That lived here. They are part of this community, and you guys just wiped after, they wiped them out.
I'm saying no, she has not been fired.
Mr. Yunuzi?
No, you should be, that's what you just did. Shame on you, that's what that was.
The motion on the table now for Don Jones as the borough secretary. Ms. Gross? Ms. Reeves?
No.
Mr. Signa?
No.
Mr. Sprague?
Aye.
Mr. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Yunuzi?
Aye.
Four three. Just to be clear, Ms. Torres still is employed by the borough, Ms. Torres will still do the roles and responsibilities that she's currently doing. It is a procedural thing with the secretary and having the authority to enter into contracts, and because now that we have a borough manager, that responsibility goes to the borough manager. The vote that we took this evening for Don Jones is simply a procedural vote on what the responsibilities are currently. We have not had a borough manager in some time, we elevated Tina's responsibilities to be able to sign contracts, and what we're doing now is to shifting that responsibility to Ms. Jones. That is the action that's being taken this evening, just to be clear. Right to know officer ought to entertain a motion for a right to know officer.
I make a motion to appoint Don Jones as right to know officer for the Borough of Eddie Stone, understanding that Pacente Consulting will continue in said role until the employment agreement is executed.
Yeah, you gotta correct that motion. It's gotta be, it can't be Pacente, so you can't have a, it's gotta be an individual, Mike was the...
So we'll have to, Mike Pacente.
Mike Pacente was the...
Mr. Sprague, you're a pure guy, we started Mr. Mike Pacente.
Sure, uh, make a motion to appoint Don Jones as right to know officer for the Borough of Eddie Stone, understanding that Mike Pacente will continue in said role until the employment agreement is executed.
I second that.
I have a motion made and seconded. Any other motions, or any other nominations?
Yes, I would like to make Mike Pacente a right to know officer.
Okay, Mark, which one you want to do first?
Uh, I'll go with the first motion, right?
My first motion is to appoint Don Jones as a right to know officer. Roll call. Ms. Gross?
No.
Ms. Reeves?
No.
Mr. Signa?
No.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Yunuzi?
Yes.
Four three. Are there any other professional appointments that we need to make this evening?
You gotta jump back and do the vacancy board chair. I'm sorry, I'll take the vacancy board chair. Does a vacancy board chair need to be, need to be sworn in?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, vacancy, uh, support chair, it is one of the officers of the, uh, so you want to put that out till next week, can we get the judge back? Is that what you're suggesting?
Well, I think the American...
Oh, sure.
Well, I'd like to make a motion, I don't see where this is... I'd like to make a, a motion to appoint to the vacancy chair, the chair of the vacancy board, Mr. Gene Wiley, Eugene Wiley.
Set second.
I'll make a motion to appoint Judy, appoint Judy Condo to the vacancy board.
I have a motion on the floor for Bob Wiley, which has been seconded.
Eugene Wiley.
Ju- Eugene Wiley, I'm sorry, Mr. Wiley. Mr. Pacente, can you do a roll call, please?
That was nice of you to do their drafts for them and highlight everything they're supposed to save them.
Ms. Gross?
For Judy, yes.
Yeah, we're on Eugene Wiley. No, okay, Ms. Reeves?
No.
Mr. Signa?
No.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Yunuzi?
Yes.
Any other professional appointments or any other appointments?
Mr. Mayor, would you mind swearing in the vacancy board chair?
You have the form, I'm like, the form typed up?
The form typed up.
You don't have a copy of it?
No, I don't.
Why don't we wait till next Monday when we have the judge back? If that's agreeable, the council, I'm not sure, I'd like to know what form it is.
It's the oath, it's the oath, do you have a copy of the oath?
She has a copy of it.
Do you have a copy of the oath? The one you just, you just, you just put your hand on the Bible and said the oath. You have that, you have that.
I have a blank copy of the oath.
There you go, that'll work. Eugene. Bob, Bob. Oh, Eugene. Yeah, yeah, no, I didn't say name.
Okay, raise your left hand in the Bible, raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
Uh, Eugene Wiley.
Being duly, duly sworn up according to the law.
Being duly sworn according to the law.
Do hereby depose and state that I am...
Do, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. According to law, do, do hereby depose.
Do hereby depose.
And state that I am...
State that I am.
Registered elector.
Registered elector.
Of the Borough of Eddie Stone.
The Borough of Eddie Stone.
County of Delaware.
County of Delaware.
And that I currently reside, and I have decided.
And currently reside, and I am desired.
Continuously in the borough.
I'm sorry.
Continuously.
Continuously of the borough.
Or in the ward.
Or in a ward.
In case of ward office.
In case of ward office.
For at least one year immediately prior.
In case of one year, or at least required.
Immediately prior, to my election in accordance...
I'm sorry.
To my elec- election in accordance.
Elections in accordance.
With section eight oh one and nine oh one.
With section eight oh one and nine oh one.
Of the Borough Code.
The Borough Code.
Congratulations.
Council does have some action items that's on the agenda this evening, is there any public comments before we move on to the action items? Yes, Ms. Hall?
Um, I have a lot of resumes that have been asked, and I just put the Christmas trees out.
We have a brand new council board, I'm sure it's going to be one of the topics of discussion in next Monday's meeting, and we would be able to, to provide you some additional direction next Monday.
I thought it was something that would have been planned out since Christmas was before the...
Yeah, well, who was responsible for that after Christmas?
I'm asking, I'm not saying there's not a date set, I'm asking if there is a date.
At this time, I do not know when we'll put the Christmas tree in now.
Or they should wait for a specific date.
Normally, normally we wait till after Little Christmas, which is today, today, yeah, so normally, they wait till after, um, and then something's set up.
So, so there's a specific date, they don't just put it out on regular trash?
I used to register mine, now it's ready to trash.
That's what people are asking, so, that's what they should do. Next couple weeks, or, or the weekend, go back and get it, yeah. Okay.
Council at this time ought to take action to consider engaging a consultant. Counsel, this time I'll take action to, uh, consider engaging a consultant to do a review of our financial accounting procedures and practices.
I'd like to make a motion to engage Brinker Simpson and Company LLC to examine and analyze current Borough accounting policies, procedures, and internal controls for a cost not to exceed $6,000.
Have a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Counsel, any questions or comments before I request to take action? I think it's just a prudent thing to do with a new council board being seated this evening, a new Borough Manager coming in. It's just a prudent thing to make sure that, uh, books are in order at this particular time. Any other questions? Not hearing any? All in favor, please say aye. 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 Opposed?
No.
Let's do a roll call vote, Mr. Pessenti. Ms. Gross.
No.
Ms. Reeves.
No.
Ms. Sigga.
No.
Ms. Sprague.
Aye.
Ms. Stewart.
Aye.
Ms. Wilson.
Aye.
Ms. You're Newsy.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Spend him more money. There you go.
Maybe we don't have that 26,000.
Yeah, yeah, we didn't get the 200,000. Put a budget a couple, couple years ago either, Mr. Wilson. Great, great.
Counsel, at this time, is there any consideration on reopening the 2020 budget?
I'd like to make a note... A motion to reopen the 2020 budget pursuant with section 1311 of the Pennsylvania Borough Code. That's one motion.
What's section 1311?
So it's, uh...
So I got just the highlighted piece that Bill gave me. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, uh, if I may, section 1311 of the Borough Code talks about during the month of January, following a municipal election like we had last year, the Council of Borough can amend the budget and the levy and the tax rate to conform with its amended budget. Uh, so you have to provide a period of 10 days' public inspection for the amended budget after notice, and you have to get all this... The amended budget has to be passed by the 15th day of February. So the, the motion to reopen the budget is in conformance of 1311, something this new council can take a relook at the budget and make any changes that they see.
Right, but they can only make a change for 15%, correct? It cannot go over 15% either way.
Uh, there's nothing in the law about a 15% limitation.
Could you double check on that, please?
Uh, certainly.
Thank you.
So have a motion, Mr. Wilson, can I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Pessenti, let's do a roll call vote. Ms. Gross.
They want to bring somebody in. They want to reopen the budget.
Ms. Reeves.
No.
Ms. Sigga.
No.
Ms. Sprague.
Aye.
Ms. Stewart.
Aye.
Ms. Wilson.
Aye.
Ms. You're Newsy.
Aye.
Motion passes four to three.
I have a question. You reopened the budget, so that means you gotta have a vote to pass this new budget, correct?
You are correct.
So that means the Borough's gonna operate with no budget?
For the first, till 15th of Fe... No, 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 no later than the 15th of February.
Okay, so does that mean if you're gonna operate with no budget, then how do you pay for services? Trash removal, Borough employees under the police department?
Two separate things.
So two separate things. It's all part of the budget.
All your normal services are paid as usual.
You do that without a budget?
Yes.
Perfectly appropriate under sixteen, six, uh, 1311s.
Have any other motions about the budget?
I'd like to make a motion to freeze all salaries of Borough employees at the November 1st, 2019 level pending finalization of the 2020 budget.
Does that include police officers?
I said all employees.
You can't do that.
I have a motion to freeze all salaries at the November 1st, 2019 levels. Can I have a second, please?
Absolutely not.
May I have a second?
Mr. President, a question. Uh, this is... This is a procedural vote so that we can finalize the budget and...
That is correct. This is a procedural vote to finalize the budget.
So it has nothing to do with any long-term planning?
It has nothing to do with any long-term planning at all. In fact, what the procedure would be is that during this month while we reopen the budget, typically, we would do a salary resolution giving the employees a cost of living or greater raise. That cost of living or greater raise would be made retroactive back to the 1st of January. So procedurally, what this is doing is just freezing all salaries, not giving any pay increases until we pass the reopened budget.
Right.
And then after we pass the reopened budget, any money's owed to any employees would be paid back retroactively for their pay raises on the 1st of January.
Okay.
A question for you. And when you do pay it back, that would be with interest?
No, sir, that would not be with interest. That would just be dollar for dollar.
Police officers are all under contract, right?
Hey, police officers, okay with that? You're all under contract.
So do I have a second? I have a motion on the table to freeze all salaries with a second.
Absolutely not.
May I have a roll call vote, Mr. Pessenti? Ms. Gross. Ms. Reeves.
No.
Ms. Sigga.
No.
Ms. Sprague.
Aye.
Ms. Stewart.
Aye.
Ms. Wilson.
Aye.
Ms. You're Newsy.
Aye.
All these changes with the budget, I gotta ask, are we factoring EMS too?
Yes.
Because I don't want to die, so just make sure.
That's one of the main reasons that we are reopening the budget.
Okay. And then how, like, I mean, I guess the next meeting, I guess, when everything gets situated, like, you'll have an idea of the guys and what they'll be paid in hours and...
So not our employees. First, it has to be, um... It has to be determined whether they're our employees or not, and that's in litigation.
Yeah, so are we going to do anything with Andy? Talk to him about what is standard?
Andy resigned.
So Andy resigned.
Andy resigned. So there's nobody there babysitting him now.
So what are we gonna... All right. I'll wait till the next meeting.
Your comments again, Karen.
I'll wait till the next one.
These are your son. Your son wasn't babysitting down there. He's the one that needs to be babysitting down there.
Mr. Uh, Pessenti, if we can move forward... Mr. Pessenti, if we can move forward, I, I do believe that you received, um, the Police Pension Plan Actuary Cost Study as of January 1st, 2020, which is otherwise known as the Act 205 Evaluation, and that was to evaluate the additional costs to the pension plan associated with the police contract.
Nobody got it. It was emailed directly to us. We have one copy that was emailed. I can make copies. I didn't make copies.
Well, how's Mr. Stewart get a copy then?
Mr. Stewart requested a copy of it.
Well, come on, our back the last couple weeks, you know, planning your... Making sure everybody had their...
Yeah, your meaning.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, look, the strengths. Can I check your strengths, God?
Mr. Pessenti, can you just give us a quick overview of that document?
Yeah, 'cause the document has a lot...
Eric, can you share that with the solicitor, please?
So the document, you guys authorized the document at the December meeting to do an Act 205 required study regarding two, two of the proposed changes to the police contract. And the actuary did the report as required. One was reduced the normal retirement age to 55, from 55 to 50. And then there was also three studies, actually, and there was provided service increment of $100 per month for each year of service in the excess of 25 years to a maximum $50 per month. After five years of service in the excess of 25 years, and then, uh, moving the drop program from, uh, to 60 months. So the study was done, um, from Breyer, who works for the actuary. So they broke out a couple scenarios regarding the act, uh, regarding the drop program. The drop program was benefit, uh, is pension. It's pretty much cost neutral towards the benefit. There's no, uh, no effects towards the pension plan with the, uh, pension plan, with the cost. So it's cost neutral to the pension plan. You have 44 drop. As far as the scenarios regarding the 55 to 50 increases and regarding the service increments, lowering the retirement age from 55 to 50 increases the plan's liability by $129,230. So there's an amortization schedule that goes into play. So it's a 10-year amortization schedule for that, for the decrease in the retirement age. You're looking at about a $39,000 increase yearly for a 10-year amortization schedule. With the service increment, which would be scenario two, you're looking at roughly about a $3,500 increase to the pension payment, to the MMO payment, your minimum nestle obligation. That's for 10-year period. So starting in 2022, you're looking at roughly about a $43,000 increase into your MMO payment for 10 years because of the increment, because of the, uh, the benefits. And then after your 10-year period, you'll drop. So after the 10 years, you're looking at roughly about $24,000 a year that would increase your MMOs. That is the report of the actuary. That's just facts. That's not nothing, you know, that I came up with. This came from Breyer and Barber Company. You guys can, we can make copies, but it's actually page four, section two, is what you really want to look at. That's what breaks it down. There's two, the two different scenarios. But that's just the facts. That's what you asked for. That's what's required of you to do for, for the Act 205 requirements, and that's what you're gonna put in the actuary's office. So that's, that's what, and that's what...
This actually won't affect, affect anything for...
Till 2022.
Correct.
But then it's gonna affect you for years and years and years. 10 years, and then after the amortization schedule runs out, you'll be affected still, but it'll just be lower amounts.
Okay, what are we paying now? We have seven police officers that are retired. Two of them are on actual retirement at 50%. The rest of them are getting 70% tax-free, except for the exception of one that's only getting 25%.
Your MMO payment for 2019 was $163,000 and some change. That was your MMO payment for, for last year. And then you, what, I, off the top of my head, I don't know what you got. I forget what you guys approved for 2020, end of December, or September council meeting.
Isn't it contractual between you and the police?
What?
Is it contractual between you and the police?
What's contractual?
The, the retirement plan?
The MMO?
Yeah.
It's a police pension? It's, it's our, yeah, it's a police pension.
So that I can understand the, the police contract, it's... And I'm assuming, Ms. Reeves, did you lead the negotiation for the police contract?
No, I did not.
Who was the...
Ms. Buckus and Mr. Sigga.
Okay, well, it wouldn't be fair for me to ask Ms. Buckus in her capacity, but Mr. Sigga, there's, from what I understand, there was two major changes to the pension portion of the contract, correct? The first change was to institute a drop...
Drop program.
Program. And then the second change was to reduce the retirement age from 50 to, from 55 to 50, and reduce the service from 25 years to 20 years?
I think all these questions have been a... You have asked and asked and asked.
But I'm not getting any answers.
Well, here's your answer. There's a copy back there you could go get. I'm tired of this. This is every time bill. If it don't, you, you know what was in there. You read it over there. So I don't know what you're after. We did the right thing, and you never showed up for a meeting. You don't do anything. But you sit here and badger and then bring now, well, the posse we gotta face.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to say that we did the right thing. However, what, what advantage did the drop program bring to any of the officers that are currently on the force?
Can you explain this? Do you get into it?
It didn't.
The longer they work.
It didn't. The drop program didn't bring anything.
Kelly explained it to you. I'm not going in. I did, I just want you to know one thing. I did the right thing. I could sleep at night, and I'm done. I'm, I'm tired of being badgered by him. He doesn't come to meetings. All he does is look for ways to pull you apart. That's all he does. Just like he did tonight. And I had more faith in a few people, but now it's not even good anymore.
I'd like to ask a question. I'd like to ask, when you did these negotiations, who were, who was present at the negotiations?
I'm not answering any more questions. I just got done telling you. I'm done with it. The contract is signed, sealed, delivered. I don't want to hear the...
Was the Borough Labor Attorney present at those, at those negotiations?
I'm not answering. Can anybody hear me?
Was the actuary who oversees the police pension present at those negotiations?
Can you hear me back there, please?
Okay. When you...
How this, how this all started, I will explain it to you, Mr. Wilson.
No, I'm asking a question.
I'm not answering nothing. I'm done. I told you that.
Are you aware that the police are being, having their pension mishandled? Are you aware that, that the police pension is funded at 62% and it should be funded at 90% or better?
Where did you get these figures?
These pictures... From the Auditor General through a letter that went to all members of the...
He was in charge. What was he...
Shame on you. That was on 2017, wasn't it?
Yeah, there you go.
Mr. Solicitor, you know, before we, before we go too far off a subject is...
And then you went and put a Republican in charge of your council. Shame on you. It's all the Republicans that...
I'm not. I'm giving you a question. Who's the one that vices one up there?
That's the one together.
Yeah, they tried.
Those are not. You're not. Everybody up there, this side is the same one.
They wanted to get...
We have that together.
They wanted, wronged. That's not them. That's a Democrat. That's a nominee.
Come on, let them work together.
Yes. You see, you see, the one with the pork tongue.
When, when the Borough Council enters into a negotiation with the police department, and that negotiation includes changes to the pension plan, what responsibility by Borough Code does the council have in regards to the long-term health of that pension plan?
Sure, Mr. President. So there's something called Act 205 that the state has passed, and it's, it's clear that prior to the adoption of anything that's gonna modify a benefit plan like a pension, you have, you have to have an actuarial report. An actuarial report has to tell you the impact of the modifications. It also has to tell you whether or not the actuarial, or, sorry, whether the pension plan is actuarially sound.
Okay.
So, uh, a couple of things. I mean, if, if you're telling me this is a contract that's already been...
It's already signed, sir.
Approved. I mean, this report wasn't done before that, so that was in violation of Act 205. And this report, I, I mean, it talks about the retirement age being reduced to age 55, and I think we heard it might be 50, so I'm not sure it covers that. Um, and this does not say that the actuarial plan is actuarially sound. So this report does not meet the requirements of Act 205, which you need to have before you approve any contract that, that modifies a benefit plan. I'd like to make a motion to reject the actuarial cost study that was received for the Borough of Eddie Stone because it doesn't meet the requirements of Act 205. That's my motion.
So I have a motion on the table to reject the actuar, the report that we received from Breyer and Barber in cooperation with Thomas J. Anderson for the police pension. Have a second?
Reject it for the purpose of what?
Because it did not meet the requirements of Act 205, per the advice of our solicitor.
So what you're saying then is Thomas J. Anderson doesn't know what they're doing?
No, what I'm saying is that report does not meet the requirements of Act 205 in accordance with the state code.
And that, that report was not prepared by Thomas J. Anderson, who is the, uh...
In cooperation with Thomas J. Anderson and Associates. See it at the bottom?
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
What is the question, if I could? What is the, the purpose of, like, what, what is the...
Basically, the purpose of the 205 report.
I'm sorry. Uh, the purpose of rejecting the actuarial cost study.
Because we're gonna push it back to Thomas J. Anderson and say that they have to do it in accordance with Act 205.
Okay. All right. In that case, I second that.
So I have a motion made and seconded. Mr. Pessenti, can I have a roll call vote, please, on rejecting the actuary report that was prepared by Breyer, Barber, and Company in cooperation with Thomas J. Anderson?
Ms. Reeves?
Well, it actually doesn't make any sense. Who's Breyer, Barber, and Company? They've worked with Thomas J. Anderson. So you're gonna throw it back to Thomas J. Anderson?
We'll throw it back to Thomas J. Anderson and tell Thomas J. Anderson to produce something that meets the Act two oh five requirement.
That is a motion on the table.
Thomas Bessente, I have a roll call vote, please. Ms. Reeves?
No.
Mr. Sigga?
No.
Mr. Sprague?
Aye.
Mr. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Yuduzi?
Aye.
Four, two.
Charles, Beth back there? Tell Beth we're waiting for her. She's standing there.
So, Mr. Solicitor, now here she comes.
Hey, Beth, wait for your vote.
So we're waiting on Beth's vote for the rejection of the, of the two oh five report, Mr. Bessente? Do we have, do we have a recorded vote for the rejection of the two oh five, or we waiting on Ms. Gross?
Four, two.
Four, two?
I think I changed it to four, three.
Beth, are you in, I, that's four to three. Mr. Solicitor, can you give us the procedure that the borough needs to follow? Um, you know, and to, to bring you up to speed. There was a contract that was executed with the FOP that includes pension changes. The date of that executed contract, I believe, was the twentieth of November. However, a vote in front of council did not occur until the ninth of December. And at the meeting of the ninth of December, council was placed on notice by our borough manager that we were not complying with the Act two oh five requirement of having that pension evaluated prior to ratification of the contract. Am I correct in?
Yeah, you have to have this report before you can vote on the contract. So the, so the December ninth vote would be void. I recommend avoid that vote.
That's not what we were, that's not what we were told by our solicitor.
Well, uh, the law is clear that prior to the adoption of any benefit plan modification, you're telling me this contract modified the benefit plan. You have to have this actuarial report. It's state statute, so it trumps any kind of negotiating process. So I would recommend that you vote to avoid that December ninth vote. Uh, and then you'll have to re-vote on the contract, really, once you have this, the two oh five.
Well, I don't think that's right, because the people that voted are not here, no longer here.
Mr. President?
Yes, I'm sure, sure. Um, regardless of Act two oh five, if the con, if the contract was executed before there was a vote of council to approve that, that's technically not legal either, correct?
Well, true. It wasn't truly, uh, not biting on, uh, the borough on twenty. It has to be approved by council, correct?
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
So I'm understanding that you're making a recommendation to this board to void council's vote of December ninth on the basis that two oh five report wasn't complete.
Right, you were in compliance with state statute, Act two oh five. Specifically, it's, uh, fifty-three Pennsylvania jurisdictions, section eight nine five point three. You were not in compliance, so you should void that vote.
Council, please, call for a motion?
I'll make the motion to void council's vote on December ninth, two thousand nineteen, to approve the contract with the Eddie Stone PD FOP Lodge twenty-seven for failure to comply with Act two oh five requirements.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
No.
Roll call, please. Ms. Gross?
No.
Ms. Reeves?
No.
Mr. Sigga?
No.
Mr. Sprague?
Aye.
Mr. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Yuduzi?
Aye.
Four, three.
Aren't you opening yourself up for the litigation from the FOP?
Yes, they are. They are. Yes, they are, Terry. Yes, they are. Yes, they are.
It's an illegal contract.
I can only speak for myself. I don't have a law degree. Our solicitor does. I asked the question. I'm acting on the advice of the only lawyer in the room.
Contract's signed, please.
If it was signed illegally.
Well, you were, you were told by your own attorney.
Who would give you, who would give you that information, Councilwoman Gross?
I would think the people that we're dealing with.
Who were you dealing with? Who was your labor solicitor?
I wasn't dealing with them. I'm just saying that that information was given to us.
Well, we, we asked you whether the labor, labor solicitor was involved in this negotiation. You refused to answer that the labor solicitor was involved.
They did meet with the labor solicitor. Yeah, they did.
Who met with the labor solicitor?
Kelly and, Kelly and Stan.
Was the labor solicitor present at the negotiation?
At one of the meetings, correct? They also met with the FOP rep, who was Joe, Joe Pretty, and Joe contacted his men.
So now, we're, we're in a kind of a precarious situation as a council table in the fact that we've rejected the actuarial report that evaluated the pension modifications. We're throwing that back to Thomas J. Anderson and Associates to get clarification on what impacts the pension changes are going to make to our MMO. And we've also voided now the vote of December ninth, two thousand nineteen. So therefore, at this time, we don't have a contract, correct, Mr. Solicitor?
That's correct.
No, we got a lawsuit instead.
As, as a formality, do we need to make a motion to formally reject the contract, or?
It's up to, to council. It might make sense if we're opening the budget, then you don't have to do an Act two oh five plan. If you still wanna consider that contract, you still need the Act two oh five. So you can't approve the contract tonight because you don't have the Act two oh five.
Correct.
You could reject it if you wanted to.
I guess with pleasure. What do you guys have against the police?
There's absolutely nothing against the police. The issue is-
We're trying, we're trying to look out for the police pension here, is what we're trying to do.
We're trying to do a right study.
Because you have not been funding the police pension for the last eight years. That's why. Their pension is liable to fail, and those guys are gonna have their pension. Why don't you listen, why don't you read your mail from the auditor general when they audit your accounts? And you, and at, at what level is the, uh, police pension funded?
About eighty, ten percent right now?
No.
Sixty-two percent. Sixty-two percent.
Which is financially distressed. They were about one point six million dollars behind market.
One point six million dollars behind on the police, police pension payments now. Did anybody tell the people that?
Did anyone tell the police that?
Did anybody tell the police that?
Police, I'm sure the police are aware.
The police don't care that their pension is only sixty-two percent funded?
I said they're aware. I said I'm sure they're aware.
Do the young, do the young policemen, men care that the, that the pension is sixty-two percent funded and that might not even be there for them when they retire?
Well, your young ones are paying the, so it doesn't, payments for you.
Why, why were you not making payments on the pension?
Mr. Wilson, how long has it been that way?
It's been that way for a long time.
Been that way.
You voted for very long time.
You sir, you sir voted for a budget that didn't pay that.
I know, but how long?
So now, was that, and it's moved up?
How long, how long has it been?
We do not have drop in the contract.
Now, it's no more business as usual.
And now you have- We do not have drop. We do not have reduction. Now, what happens when you drop the retirement age from fifty-five to fifty?
You get them out before they get injured. They're more likely to get injured.
And then there's some people drawing on the principal of the pension plan. It's like having a ten thousand dollar, you know, balance on your credit card. Counsel, we want to take action at this time to reject the contract. I think it's probably most fair to the police officers to let them know that the contract is officially being rejected so they can take proper action with, with their lodge and with their council.
Yes.
So I'll undertake, I'll undertake a motion if council desires.
Make a motion to reject-
They are like fourth from the lowest date and forty-seven minutes of hours.
And nobody, like, can I, all right, can I address that?
Sure.
Would it be okay? Nobody's saying there's going to be any kind of actual change to that. We just legally can't accept the contract without the two oh five being in place.
But I believe that there'll be, there'll be a law.
Oh, Chris, I think you're misreading that. No offense.
I'm not saying it is or it isn't. I'm saying that is not what we're discussing here, and nobody is saying that it has anything to do with salary. The issue is that the pension fund is underfunded by one point six million dollars, and we have to find a way to handle that.
For how many years?
I'm sorry?
For how many years has it been that way?
I, that has nothing to do with the vote we're taking right now.
It was certainly for the last two years, if you wanna put it that way.
How about them? One thing, it's been a lot longer than that, Wilson.
What have you done to fend the pension, the pensions since you were in the council? Is it your pleasure to make a motion to reject the contract at this time?
Yes.
I make a motion to reject what is now considered a proposed, uh, sorry, proposed agreement between the borough of Eddie Stone and Eddie Stone PD FOP Lodge seven, or, sorry, FOP Lodge twenty-seven.
A second.
Got a motion made and seconded to reject the police contract. Mr. Bessente, can I have a roll call vote, please? Ms. Gross?
No.
Ms. Reeves?
No.
Mr. Sigga?
No.
Mr. Sprague?
Aye.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Yuduzi?
Aye.
Motion passes four to three. Counsel, any other action items that need to be taken?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I have a motion on the table to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that.
I already have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.